Live.
Live currently, so can we please have a call to order in pledge of allegiance to the October 5th, 2020 meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting of the Development Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October 5th, 2020 was advertised in the Courier on January 7th, 2020, and at the teleconference as again noticed on the official Denellon website on September 26th, on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on September 26th, and again advertised in the Courier on September 30th. Involved: Mayor Salento.
President.
Council President Baer.
Eric.
This is Burke.
Here.
Dr. Dunn.
Here.
Mrs. Norverson.
Roger.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Sigman.
Here.
Item number four on our agenda is ordinance, public hearing and adoption. We have two bond ordinances. Oh, sorry, disregard, I apologize, I'm getting too excited. Item number three, can we please have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the September 21st, 2020 meeting?
Move it, Burke.
Comment your questions. Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes. Okay, now we have item number four on the agenda. I apologize, I was getting excited, got to piss in our sewer line. Ordinance, public hearing and adoption. We have two this evening, 2020-12 and 2020-13. Bill, can you please repeat them?
Yes, sir.
Move it, Burke. Second, Dunn.
Yes, at this moment in time, we will have public comment, questions or concerns regarding 2020-12, the bond ordinance for emergency stormwater repair on Jackson Avenue. Without hearing any, this portion is closed, and Bill, can you please take the vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Another motion on 2020-13, this is a public hearing for bond ordinance for emergency sanitary sewer improvements on Penn Field Place.
Move it.
Mr. Sigman.
Second.
Thank you. Second, Rios, thank you.
At this moment in time, we'll have a public hearing on the ordinance for 2020-13, emergency sanitary sewer improvements on Penn Field Place. Please state your name and address, and ask any questions, comments or concerns regarding this item from the public. Without your speaking, we'll close that portion. Bill, before we take a vote, are we just public unmuted for these moments? I just want to make sure it's the list, we're not keeping them muted while we ask them.
I've made Ronnie James.
Yeah, Derek Roberts.
Oh, hi Ronnie, thank you Ronnie.
Thanks.
Bill, please take a vote.
I'll take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, we have resolutions this evening. Bill, Dr. Robbins, can you please...
Another motion, take a vote.
Move it.
Burke, second, Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Baer, Mrs. Burke. Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Another motion on number two, this approves the Denellon Prison Associates Urban Renewal LLC as a sub redevelopment.
Move it.
Second, Burke.
Bill, if you might explain what this is for council and the public, because I know there's been questions regarding the Art Keller property, and that we're moving forward, and so this is a good opportunity to let the public and the council know that Art Keller is being developed.
The council and the public are aware, and information to this effect is on our website on the redevelopment page. The project is actually composed of an overarch and a complete Denellon program renewal, I'm gonna get it in regard of the name, but Prism is doing the apartments, and K L has been doing the townhouses. Under the redevelopment agreement, I think it's possible, and sometimes advisable, to designate a sub redevelopment for a portion, and this is what we're doing here tonight.
Any other questions from the council? Is there a vote?
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Motion on yet another iteration of the municipal alliance grant application. The numbers just changed a little bit, so we have to redo it.
Move it, Burke. Second, Dunn.
Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Motion on number four, this certifies the CY 2019 audit.
Motion, Ray, take it.
Second, Ray.
Have copies of the audit. Are there any questions on this? And remember, we'll take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Here.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Item five, have a motion, this accepts the corrective action plan for the CY 2019 audit. You have copies in your packet. Have a motion on this?
Move it, Dunn.
Second, Baer.
Comment your questions. Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Any kind of motion on number six authorizes Mr. Booter, the municipal attorney, to execute documents regarding the tax sale settlement with New Virgo.
Move that.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. Questions? Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Next section of the agenda, I've actually divided into two consent agendas. Seven through twelve are items to be awarded under the general purpose bond ordinance. These are all items that are thoroughly vetted by the, recommended by departments, vetted by planning committees, and now presented to you for award. You take any of them out, or you can take them on the last but single. Motion, second.
Move it, Dunn.
Second, Baer.
Thank you, so it's numbers seven through twelve. You take a roll.
I just want to make a comment real quick regarding bonds and capital improvements. You know, as you see here, these items were, as Bill, Dr. Robbins' state, have been reviewed, they've been vetted, and these are items that are in disrepair, need to be replaced, and investments need to be made into our departments, their equipment, so departments can operate and function efficiently, that better serve our constituency, and it's the obligation of the local council to make sure our departments operate for the residents. So that's why we're making these investments into our community.
Thank you.
Now you can take the roll, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. Take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
The next core part of the agenda is also presenting as a consent agenda. These are all approvals of payments to council or engineers for various redevelopment projects, one of whom is Duke, the other Denellon Station, or 528 North Avenue LLC. And you've seen variations of the... I'm glad to take any of these out, thirteen through seventeen, otherwise we'll take a second motion, second.
Second, Burke.
Thank you, I'll take a roll, Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Norverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios.
Yes.
Mr. Sigman.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, we have reports. We'll go around the room. Councilmember Rios, anything to report this evening?
Yes, the library is doing computer use by appointment only right now. Please call or check out our library website, set that up. There is a ballot box at the Denellon Library, blessed daily by the county election officials. The municipal alliance, tomorrow is the municipal alliance knockouts opioid day. The fun fact, after tooth extraction, sixty-one percent of thirteen to seventeen-year-olds are prescribed opioid. You ready to vote for me?
Regarding the superior ballot box, just so the public is aware, I know it's a concern, the county picks up daily.
Yes.
And there is one Republican and one Democrat vehicle, making sure those ballots are picked up, secure, holding each other accountable, so...
Yes.
The secure ballot box probably needs saving, please, we're gonna drop your ballot.
And there is a way to track your ballot, so we should publicize that. And after the primary election, I did get a confirmation letter that my ballot had been received and processed in an affirmative manner. By far, that is dropping it off at the box by the library is the most secure way to vote this fall.
And the library is monitored by cameras, so...
Twenty-four seconds.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember R.
A couple of things here, so first, just to begin, I want to thank the nice Columbus for the police vigil yesterday. It was a lovely event, and it was obviously, we're very grateful for the officers here and our other frontline responders, especially for the things that they try to endure and work through over the last few months, obviously not easy, uncharted territories that we're all in. The fire department is trying to game plan some ideas for fire prevention weeks, so offering my, some of my technical services to them. Hopefully they take me up on that. They are still in need for valve replacements, so as we do it through the year, maybe the bonds will come back around. We give the bond that has three considerations to include that. And just keep in mind, one of their last fundraisers for this year will be the selling of Christmas trees, so to make sure we consider them for our holiday purchases. One question, we were looking, Bill, there would have been a thing that came out, Alex was looking to use, or get committee approval for the rec website to be able to pay us. Where are we with that, you know?
Committee just has to approve.
I believe we did.
We did.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
I believe tax office is working with, and this is under the same conversation you're speaking about, that a lot of taxes can be taken through the...
No, no, that's just a separate...
Separate vote.
Okay. Working still on the Facebook account, the committee should actually meet and maybe both collaborate on this about archiving what we need to do there. O E M will be conducting a training session this Thursday at the senior center. O E M is certainly looking for, or not most, volunteers to continue to help out. The latest edition of the Denellon report should be arriving into homes in the near future. Future articles will be due by the middle of December. I encourage all council members to spot ideas that their committees have, or liaisons do, to continue the exposure transparency for the borough, and you can send me those articles by mid-December for January publication. And to continue on the voting conversation, just the last day to register for vote, which you can do online, is October 13th.
Okay, thank you. Council President Baer.
The CARES Act money should be, you know, that we received, should be going back into the accounts of the departments that were, that were on the report, that expensed those, so that should take place. Everybody should get their money back into their budgets. And to reiterate what the mayor said before, all the items on the recent general purpose bond ordinance are crucial to the borough's ability to serve the residents. I can't overstate it. And that's it for tonight.
Dr. Dunn.
All right, I have a few things, just to build on what Mr. Council President Baer just said. I want to thank the council for approving the purchases for the DPW. If any of you have seen any of those equipment, most of it, the current equipment is unworkable, and probably needed to be repaired years, or repaired or replaced years ago, so thanks to the council for approving that under the bond ordinance. Also grateful, one of the changes that we've made this year is hiring a DP manager, DPW manager and assistant, and so I've been working closely with Alex Miller to really coordinate some scheduling and reporting back to the council, so we are aware of what the DPW is doing. So Alex did provide me with a report, which I will read, so over the last two weeks since our last meeting, the DPW has done the following: daily maintenance of the parks in downtown, street sweep downtown, cleared all the catch basin grates of leaves and debris, painted the crosswalks and restriked the library parking lot, trimmed trees as needed, walked the brooks and streams, making sure we have no blockages, had to remove a tree across the brook, and cleared out limbs and debris, cleared up stump grinds from grounded stumps from the storm, continuing Saturday rolloff household collection, which will continue through October 17th. And as a reminder to all the other departments in the borough, we now have a mechanic who has been busy maintaining not only the DPW vehicles, but our police vehicles and fire and SUV. So just a reminder also to the other departments to please contact Alex with requests for mechanic. We will hopefully, as April mentioned, we will hopefully be having our Facebook page live soon, and we will put some of these updates, I've spoken to Alex about this, on the Facebook page, as well as potentially when the street sweeper will be in your neighborhood, so you can move your cars off the street if possible. And the other thing, I've got a few things here tonight, and I apologize. A resident had inquired about New Jersey Transit buses parking along South Madison and Grove Street in the mornings, and Mayor Salento had reached out to the New Jersey Transit. When they were here last week, they did not see any of the buses covering or staging in locations other than those where they have indicated that this activity should occur in the future. If you do see New Jersey Transit buses in locations other than where they should be, which is really behind, where they do recover is on the lot off of North Avenue near South Washington, towards the rear, near the railroad tracks. And if you see them in other places, please let them know, you can provide as much information, bus numbers, times and locations, so that they can have road supervision address the issue. Number three, I think I'm on, as I mentioned in the past, I've been working with members of the community on a diversity and inclusion committee. They have a near final proposal, so Mayor Salento, I will be coming to you. I know Councilwoman Rios, mind your first and last names, I got that. My success interest, so I will be looping you into that conversation as well when we have a conversation with the mayor. The Green Brick Flood Control Commission meeting is this Wednesday. It is virtual. I will, I guess, post that information, maybe we can put it on the website, Bill, I can send you the link for that. I know that they have contacted some of the residents about plans. Again, we're about four to five years off, but it's a good point to understand if anybody's interested what we are doing in that area. Finally, just have a question about what the process is for signs to be placed over the railroad bridge on Washington Avenue.
Dr. Robbins, I know it's handy for your...
When this issue came up yesterday, I was going to reach out to Dawn from New Jersey Transit. Then when she disappeared, I put off my email to her. Now that it brought it up again, I could send her an email and ask her for the procedure protocol for signs. It'll come up again, it's not on the same issue, on another issue, it's worth us finding out.
Thank you.
If you don't mind me interjecting, regarding the Revert Flood Commission, is there a section on the website, Bill, for Revert Flood Commission? There is not? Information that might be vital, people could check out on that?
If you'd like, we could start on the agency page. It's not a direct agency, but it's, you know, we help finance it, it's close enough. Similarly, we could put one off of Parsa, and a few of the other ones that we belong to, recycling for MCIA, to be a general location for all the information, rather than just place where it seems to go better. Why don't I do that?
That would be great. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Just, sorry, I said I was done and I'm not. I just want to remind the... What?
It does not.
Just want to remind the public, I mentioned that we are, and April mentioned this as well, that we are close to launching our Facebook page. So just a reminder that the Facebook pages out there that are Denellon Borough, Denellon 411, anything else out there that portrayed as a borough Facebook page is not. So just a reminder, all your official information, please contact the borough offices until, or your first stop should be the website. And then in the future, and then if you can't find your answers there, your next stop should be calling the borough offices, and that will help control this information in town, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Bill Robbins loves answering any questions from the borough. 732-968-3033.
My real number, 732-564-588. Remember section of the library. Forty years, I still remember that number.
Is that it? Okay. Councilmember, full statement. Anything to report?
Yes, just gonna hammer home the social media comments so far. We are reading to finalize our social media presence, and we want to make sure there is no confusion as to which sites represent the borough and which do not. Simply put, if the site does not state that it officially represents the borough, then it doesn't, even if it has Denellon Borough in its name. And that's it.
That's it. Councilmember Norverson.
A little, few things. For the rec department, we have seventy children between the eighth and third grades, three through five, that registered for software, started last Saturday, October 3rd. Our annual holiday parade is scheduled for the 31st, on Halloween, at noon at Columbia Park, and Mayor and Council are invited to attend. Food drive donation day is our next two days, for donations are Wednesday, October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and Thursday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you have the grocery store, see something on sale, flip up a extra can or two, write it down in the window screen, please, or you can reach out, and somebody can stop by and hook it up for you, it's an amazing time. DPMO Harvest Fest is on Sunday, October 11th, at Washington Park, at 11:00 a.m. Artists, crafters, live music, pumpkin decorating contest, if you're interested in that, you can grab a pumpkin at nine o'clock in the morning for judging. There'll also be lots of art done by students, which is always fun to see. And the next board of ed meeting is tomorrow, October 6th, at 7:30 p.m.
Okay, for I have a few things. As of today, for COVID-19 update, as of today, we currently have a cumulative total of 238 for Denellon. So that's an additional fifteen cases, cases since my September 21st, 2020 update to the council, and thankfully, we still only have nine deaths, although one is still too many. Denellon in Middlesex County cumulative total can be found at www.discovermiddlesex.com/total-cumulative-cases. So I just want to note, it is unfortunate to see this uptick in cases over the last two weeks, which means we should continue to remain diligent in our response to the COVID-19, and trying to work to decrease its spread, so please continue to practice social distancing and wearing their masks. Preventing further spread is going to really be a team effort, in making sure we move beyond this pandemic and guarantee we don't have another state shutdown, which I know we all hope doesn't happen again. I would also encourage everyone to consider getting a flu shot this year to assist in reducing the possible burden on our healthcare system that may need to continue responding to COVID-19. This would save medical resources for the care of COVID-19 patients, and also it builds your immunity to the flu as to not eating it and increase your chance of getting COVID-19. That's my personal view. As mayor, I'd like to share public health information and encourage you to get flu shots. The New Jersey COVID-19 information hub is www.covid19 nj.gov. And again, I just said, I'll continue reading this information. If you need any assistance due to a health crisis, please contact the crisis helpline by texting NJ to 741741, or call the family helpline at 1-800-843-5437. We encourage you to utilize these resources during this challenging time. You matter, and we want you to be safe. Regarding the census 2020, the US Census was extended again today, now until October 31st. If you haven't responded to date, please consider doing so, as it impacts our congressional representation and federal funding. Regarding the Denellon Urban Culture Commission, they'll be having activities at the Denellon Harvest Fest and also providing information. And they have one week left to sign up for their fall house decorating contest. Their deadline is October 12th, and if you guys are the first year of doing this, write out, yes, that's wonderful. Good, keep the spirits up. Art Keller Project has noted tonight through our resolution, all subdivision projects, their deadline is October 12th, and if you guys are the first year of doing this, write out, yes, that's wonderful. Who's ever on the line, can you please mute, because we're getting deep there? Okay. Regarding Art Keller Project, as noted tonight through our resolution of subdividing the property for Prism, the project is still ongoing. Currently, the developer is still obtaining, remaining outside agency approvals and addressing redevelopment agreement requirements. All parties are working together diligently, may I add, to move these items along in the appropriate manner, so we can see this project move forward. I would please suggest to the residents in the community, we understand your concern of seeing the project not really moving right now, but there are things moving forward in the background to make sure the project is moving forward. If you have questions, please contact the appropriate authorities, such as your mayor and council, or the borough administrator. Please do not run to social media for misinformation. Thank you. Capital improvement projects, Grove Street, we have contractors obtaining insurance on the project. Construction is anticipated to start prior to the end of the month. Residents will be notified in advance for the Grove Street roadway improvement. South Madison Avenue, sits are scheduled to be received on October 14th, and once we receive that, we will work to the most appropriate possible up there, and we will move forward in the same process as we did with Grove Street. I did present to residents on that street an update. Thank you, Alex Miller, for joining me, our public works manager and recreation director, to address some of the residents' concerns, and we're trying to move quickly on that project as well. Unfortunately, COVID did prevent some things of the state getting approved. So we are moving in a timely fashion. Transportation alternatives grant application. Transportation Alternatives Grant Application, that's due on November 24th. Bill Robbins has provided CME, our engineer, information to the portal to apply for the grant. Regarding the redevelopment project, 528 North Avenue, that's, the redevelopers is finalizing documents associated with New Jersey Transit, Department of Transportation. I apologize for streetscape enhancements required by the planning board. So, that project should be moving along pretty quick, too. 150 North, that's the Common Hall, Commune Hall, sorry, that received preliminary approval by petitions by the planning board at their meeting on September 29th, 2020. So, the redevelopers is being required to resubmit enhanced architectural plans for approval. 139 South Washington Avenue, that's the Duke Parkway, that's the corner of South Washington Avenue and Orange Street, one that caught fire. They have to resubmit an application, but the good news is, is we directed the construction office to issue a 30-day notice for the house to be torn down, so that eyesore will no longer be seen in 30 days. River Avenue sewer repairs, the contractor is prepared to commence upon receiving New Jersey Transit approval. And regarding the New Jersey Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2021 grants applications that we applied for, excuse me, for additional funds for Lincoln Avenue roadway improvement, added Victoria lighting up in town north in South Washington Avenue, bike racks, bike ramps, sorry, in town, and rapid lashing beacon at key locations for pedestrian safety. CME informed me that we should hear back from NJ DOT once they announce the awards in November. So, we'll hear, but we were at the end of those awards. The Miracle Mile Virtual Concert, that's being sponsored by the Rotary Club of Denellen and Greenbrook, in the borough, is going to be put on air October 17th. There's a GoFundMe link if people would be interested in donating to our local businesses to help them through this COVID pandemic. And there's also merchandise available for sale using a local business techno printing. I was going to say painting, but printing, sorry. And Councilmember, I was going to say Burke, but you're a segment. I would like to talk with you and library directors, Lopez, regarding possibly also setting up a drive-in on 17th, there as well. But please consider donating to the cause. I have a question regarding the school district shared service. I'm hoping that's moving along, and that we would be prepared to present that to the school district council by the, maybe the second meeting in October.
Working on it.
Okay. That's, that's going to be a key of saving some money on the utility side. Okay. I have a question for council. Actually, I'm going to make a statement, and then I have a question. I know there's been questions from the public regarding Halloween. So, to my knowledge, I know the state of New Jersey has not canceled it. I was made aware earlier in the evening that Governor, Governor Murphy needs some safety guidelines for Halloween, which we'll review and recommend to the public. Just so the public is aware, Denellen has not canceled Halloween. What we have done is work with Denellen PTO to set up key locations for residents in Denellen who would like to do a safer Halloween for trunk or treat in some of our various parks. And I know that information is being, has been put out there. But regarding going door to door, I believe that's up to the parents, whether they want to alter child door to door. That is their choice. For residents who do not wish to have their contributors come to their house, I just recommend you bring your porch light off and just not open the door. And everybody should respect each other's property and respect each other's wishes for how to handle Halloween. So, I guess the way we are doing Halloween, and I'll make my opinion known, and council can either agree or disagree, is we're giving you choices. You can have a safe way of doing Halloween with a trunk or treat, free registration, or you can go door to door. Just respect people's choice in opening their door for you to trunk or treat or not. Council?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I think the only caveat would be, and obviously if there's something, as you noted earlier, Mayor Salento, that we've had an uptick in cases, and if that continues to rise, then I'm sure there will be direction from the state. But in the absence of any directive from the state, I would agree that we should allow families to do what they think is best for themselves and their children.
I concur. I think that if the state makes a decision prior to Halloween, then obviously we would need to follow said decision, but behave responsibly. Remember also, Halloween is also on a Saturday, which is going to create lots of good time, I think, for children and families. And we obviously want to support a good time during these pandemics that we're living through. But yeah, be responsible. I agree.
Okay. So, let everybody know Halloween's not canceled, please tell them, okay? This is Halloween. There is. Okay. That is it for me tonight, unless anybody has questions from the council for me. Before we open it up to the public, any departments, we have Homer Mosley from O E M, Lieutenant Deeners from the Police Department, Alex Miller, DPW and Rec, Dr. Robbins, Bro, any comments, questions?
Okay, from the O E M, as April stated, we're going to have our, our regular O E M team in on Thursday, the training from Erica, from Erica Martin from the county. He's been a personal coach to our team as well as a trainer. So, we kind of welcome that continuous. With regards to the CARES Act, we're in part two of the reimbursement process. So, we will be inputting expenses that were paid that are COVID-related from June, July, and August. So, there's still time for anybody, for the departments, to submit their expenses, so that we can get a name first for that. O E M is still continuing to work on the E O P, the emergency operation plans. So, we're still reviewing those and making edits. With regard to social media, we had requested that we, that we get an application form so that we could actually put a O E M webpage, both as recruitment tool and plus to inform the public about emergencies. I think there is some dovetailing we need to do in terms of the Greenbrook Flood Commission because it relates to Denellen. So, I need to get a little bit more involved with that, either myself or part of my team. With regards to fire prevention, again, anything that's emergency related, we may be able to assist in the activities of the fire department with regards to fire prevention. Again, part of O E M is prepare as citizens for any emergencies. That's including promulgating preventive measures. So, that's about it. That's enough, right?
Yes. Anybody else? Okay.
Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Hello.
It's Liz. It's Liz Lopez from the library.
Hi, Liz.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to announce that we have a concert coming up featuring Sue Candy remembering Keat Keeger on, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, guys, I closed the flyer, at Washington Park, 4 p.m. on Friday, October 16th. And this was in part funded by the Middlesex County, a grant from the Middlesex County Cultural Heritage Arts Trust Fund. So, we hope that some of our library patrons will be able to join us offsite at Washington Memorial Park on the 16th at 4 p.m. for a socially-distanced outdoor concert featuring American folk artist, Sue Candy.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I will open the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and state your comment, question, or concern. Without hearing any, public portion of the meeting will be closed. And I guess we can, unless there's no other business, we can have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Don't fail her.
Bye. Bye, everybody.